Let us pray. Merciful God, be with us now as we gather together in this room to discuss the well-being of this community. Quiet our thoughts that are on tragedies at home and tragedies abroad. Speak to us that we might know how you are calling each person here today to act in your name. Work through us that your perfect will might be done. Let there be peace on earth, and let it begin with me and all of your children. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, council in your packets, you have minutes from the October 3rd, 2023 meeting. Are we getting changes or corrections? I think I heard second. I heard some noted, but...
I didn't hear a second.
Second?
I'm second.
All right. Changes, corrections? All in favor approve the minutes? October 3rd, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. Committee reports. Anything from the committees?
I have some from the G-Mag in the pocket.
Okay.
King has had a fundraiser right now. Again, on Wednesday, October 18th, at 5:00. At the Kennet Middle School girls' basketball meeting, they will have another fundraiser for any dog food or money. You know, go into their fundraising account.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else?
I got one, but I can't find my paperwork. I was taking the truck, but I remember all our tax money was up this past month with the huge tax being the highest. I think it was up $25,000. Year-to-date, I think we're up $169,002. That's just on the operating side with that stormwater and cinder and storm. That's all I got.
We'll have a final screen meeting.
The street department would like to work on, we're working on a report to the council, and we'll have that report turned over to the committee the next meeting, and then we'll bring it to y'all for, see what y'all think of it as well. We want it to be much more efficient and same with the, where the hours are spent and different issues along that line. It'd be a little bit bigger than what it was, but it's going to be much more to the point. And so we'll bring that to you probably after we have a meeting about the concrete and asphalt business.
Thank you very much. Bill?
Please, committee men, and we were in agreeance. We'd like to replace a patrol car with the, we had one that was wrecked. We have insurance money that we can use that for and be a Dodge Durango at a price of $43,672. We also get, once we get a paid invoice for that vehicle, there's a $20,000 grant that will reimburse us back $20,000 on that that I would like to also put back into the equipment fund.
How much money are you getting from the insurance?
Roughly about $37,000 is what we got. We've already got the money. It's been put into our reserve account.
Then you're going to get $20,000 back?
Yes. Once we show them that we have an invoice and we have bought the vehicle, they'll give us $20,000.
So you're going to have $57,000, and it's going to cost you $43,672. What do you say you want to do with the dollars?
We want to, when we get that money back, we want to put it back into our equipment fund.
Now, that's not counting the equipment going in the car, though. That's just the purchase price of the vehicle.
That's purchase price of the vehicle.
So will you spend some money?
Yes, we will.
Of that money to equip the car?
We plan to, we have one with $109,000 on it. We plan to take out a service. We're going to sell that vehicle, and so whatever we get out of that, we'll use that to equip the new vehicle.
Okay.
I know some of you guys, maybe you were part of it, went over to Parable and looked at their electric lease car.
Yes, we did.
Did you guys consider that? Is that a good fit for us?
We considered it, but not at this time. We would like to have a Explorer. We've got a Durango that we can get here locally, and so that's what we'd like to get in. It'll take a little bit of time to get it.
If I notify them tomorrow, it may be April or May before you get there.
Before we get it, yeah.
They won't get it very quick.
Yeah. So we need to get that taken care of if we can. I'd like to put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve the purchase of a $43,000...
$672.
$672 vehicle. That's going to be purchased from their Dodge.
Correct.
We have a second discussion regarding this motion. All in favor say aye. All opposed? Motion passed.
Also, we discussed our SRT group. We have private donations, money that has come in to buy some equipment that is much needed. We feel like it's non-lethal equipment, and the committee also approved that. I'd like to bring that to the council. Talked with two of the finance committee members. I didn't get to talk with the other one, but it's $2,413.40, and we do have more than enough money to pay for that.
Where's it coming out of?
It's coming out of private donations.
Yeah, the SRT fund.
SRT fund. But private donations have...
For $2,004.13?
$2,413.40.
Did you say the motion?
If it needs to be, yes. I put that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Multiple seconds discussion. We have people training to use that equipment.
We're going to send an officer to instructor school so he can come back and train everybody that will be using it all. There will be a training session, and you'll like to be certified on that.
Will that be after the purchase stuff?
We're going to send him just soon. Since we know we're getting this stuff, we're going to get the school set up and get him certified. I'm going to get him certified.
Okay. That is, figure out the steps.
And that'll also be paid for, the SRT money, too, that training will be.
So it's not coming out of our general budget?
Any other questions? All in favor of the motion to spend $2,413.40 and $0.43 from donations? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed.
I think that should take care of the police committee.
All right. Anyone else in the council committees? We're good? All right. Department of Management, do y'all have anything? Side report submitted? Okay. We're going to move into unfinished business. In your packet, we have park and pool budgets. Call it park and pool. I guess this...
Is this the statement of revenue?
No, sir. It's in the packet. The park department and pool. It was, it's right underneath, should have been the one first time to come up.
Right there.
In your packet.
Got it.
No changes on the budget. Just, we just want to make sure that's been approved. Some questions whether it's approved or not, so we wanted to make sure, cover our bases. So, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the park and pool budget. If so...
I don't have the original numbers. We have the original approved, but it's...
There never was one approved for park and pool.
We allocated sales tax money.
Yes, but we need to know what that number is.
200.
Okay. That is right. And pool revenue was 34,000?
34,000, yes.
So, for the audience, it looks like the pool brought in $34,000 in revenue and expenditures $35,050. So for $1,050, our city has a city fund called Open Bread Fund, which is good. And the park, you all allocated $200,000 out of budget for the park department, and it's real by its own board, and it's just approving their line items, how they're going to spend that money.
Actually, it was 250,000, and then this year they reduced it down to 200.
So we have a motion to approve this budget.
Motion.
We have a second. So we have discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed.
Then will you put that in the statement?
Yes, sir.
Of revenue and expenditures, so we can have a percentage breakdown.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. So, item B is unfinished business, but also will go into the ordinance changes office. Pretty much all the same time as the citywide trash pickup is on the agenda.
I would like to make a motion that we tabled, the vote tonight on the ordinances in Seale, White Trash Pickup.
In a second.
Motion, we have a second discussion.
Discussion. No discussion on that, on table.
Okay. I'd like to make another motion, and then we put it...
No, no, no. You already got a motion on the floor. You got it.
We said it was a discussion.
Well, you need to vote on that. I bet this got to be that motion.
So we can't discuss?
Well, it's been seconded, it's done. Now, if you vote against it, you can go out and do a second motion immediately after. This one will stick.
So we can't discuss this motion?
Not tabled.
Not tabled.
So, all in favor of tableing this, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So, show hands. All in favor of approving, table and discussion, say aye, and hold your hand, please. Okay. All opposed, table on it, say aye, show your hands.
Aye.
Okay. So that motion failed. All right.
I would like to make another motion. A motion to draw ordinance to put the municipal trash pickup of Seale, White, and Water on the ballot for April.
Okay. The motion. Anyone have a second for the motion?
I have a second.
We have a second. So the motion on the floor is to put the issue on the ballot, the trash pickup on the ballot. Discussion.
Discussion. I was still with lock, no, my question has never been answered. What did change from last year to this year that makes us such a great object?
I have the same question, but it's a view. What makes you change your mind?
I changed my mind from last year to this year.
Excuse me, let me finish. When you voted last time, when Marco was presenting this and we were going to lose all kinds of money, you voted to go ahead and put that in place, and I asked you to table it, but you refused to do so. Now, why do we want to vote on it now when last time we had that and you did not want to vote it on?
Well, last time I changed my vote when we came back in, because the citizens kept calling and did not want it. I represent the citizens of my ward, and they did not want citywide pickup. That's why I changed my mind. That's why I think it's important that it goes to vote for the citizens to vote on this issue.
All right. That's, all right. We'll see what the rest of council has to say.
Any more discussion?
And again, I have a problem with the city putting the business out of business.
The motion on the floor is to send the citywide trash pickup to vote. Motion and a second.
I have more discussion.
Okay.
I like the fact that with this program, the employees that are going to be added to this program are going to have all kinds of benefits as well. And so when we consider the addition of the multiple benefits, I think the employees of the citywide trash service would be much better off than what they currently are. We may, I can't see, can it be done without hiring more employees? Okay, so we're going to expand more people, more benefits, more employees right now. So I don't see that as an issue for me myself. I think also that it is time for us to step up and do something that obviously a lot of people don't like, but I do feel like that we have to do something to take care of this city and make it, it's a step in the right direction. I'm having a very difficult time getting a hospital to even come in and look at us because of the way we look as a city. I do have somebody that will be coming in within the next few months, and I'd like to kind of get things lined up and give some promises at that point. But I don't think we're going to have any luck getting other businesses, other services here unless we have a hospital, and I think this is part of the thing that's going to help us get another hospital. I do also feel like that I am also elected to represent the citizens of my ward, and I have had very few, I recall only one person in my ward telling me that they did not like this. And so as representing my ward, I think it sounds great.
All right, sir. Thank you. Any more discussion on this particular motion?
Yes, sir. Great. Yeah, I'd just like to say that I've also heard from people within Ward 1 who, some are for, some are against, but the majority are for this and have asked to stand firm on this. We were elected by the people within our wards to represent them, and hopefully they help, you know, we're going to exercise good judgment. And for me, this is, it's an important step, which will be one of many in getting the city cleaned up, but also for the people in the ward, they will be paying less money for greater expanded service. So to me, I just don't see why there would be opposition to paying less money for more.
Thank you.
I've got one more thing to say. I feel that we need to change with the future. If we don't change with the future, it's going to go backwards.
Miss Brown, any more discussion? All right. The motion on the floor is to put citywide trash pickup to vote. For the show of hands and say ayes, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
We got two. All opposed to that motion, say no.
No.
Aye.
Show, I think we got show of hands with two votes, four rest against. Seven against. That motion fails. Okay. We're on your agenda. We're going to go ahead and move into the ordinances, amending the ordinances. In the packet. Anybody?
First reading is amending chapter 230. And basically what all of these ordinances do is restructure our trash ordinance. And a restructure for the city to take over trash business in 2025. Except for a few minor things, while maybe 5% of our current ordinances remain in place, they're just moved to a different, they're moved differently, restructured differently, and it separates residential from commercial. First ordinance is an ordinance amending chapter 230, Article 1 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Kennet, Missouri, relative to the repeal of all sections and subsections and repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith. That is to repeal the current chapter 230 and leave it vacant for future amendments.
Do we have a motion to approve the ordinance that's read?
Motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Discussion. All in favor of the ordinance that's read, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
Second reading. An ordinance amending chapter 230, Article 1 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Kennet, Missouri, relative to the repeal of all sections and subsections and repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith.
Do we have a motion to approve the ordinance that's read?
Roll call.
Do we roll call? Yes. Don't we need a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. It'll be a roll call vote. We'll start with this vote on this side.
Aye.
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 No.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
That passes seven-two. Motion passed.
Second one is adding chapter 730 to the code, and it's the definitions and the meat of the structure of the collecting solid waste. Again, what all these ordinance do is basically restructures everything to separate commercial pickup from residential. First reading. An ordinance adding chapter 730 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Kennet, Missouri, relative to waste management and repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith.
Do we have a motion to approve the ordinance that's read?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion. All in favor of the motion that's read, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
Seven-two.
Second.
Discuss.
Second.
No, on second. All right. Okay, second reading.
An ordinance adding chapter 730 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Kennet, Missouri, relative to waste management and repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith.
Do we have a motion to approve the ordinance that's read?
Motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second? Discussion. It'll be a roll call vote, and we'll start with Mr. Palmer this time.
Aye.
No.
No.
Yes.
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 That approved. Seven-two.
Okay, the next one is, the first reading is an ordinance amending chapter 700, section 700.040, of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Kennet, Missouri, relative to powers and duties of the Board of Public Works and repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith. What this ordinance does is specifically gives the Board of Public Works the authority to collect solid, to do solid waste and collect solid waste.
Do we have a motion to approve the ordinance that's read?
Motion.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
No.
Seven-two. Second reading.
An ordinance amending chapter 700, section 700.040, of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Kennet, Missouri, relative to powers and duties of the Board of Public Works and repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith.
Do we have a motion to approve the ordinance that's read?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call vote.
Yes.
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 No.
No.
Yes.
Aye.
Motion passes. Seven-two.
The next one is a, it's an ordinance delaying enforcement of ordinances, other ordinances passing tonight until the two years is passed and until the city actually gets into the business. As you all know, the city has to give a two-year notice, so to all haulers, the city's intention to collect solid, just solid waste in the city, and therefore the ordinances that are just passing the enforcement of those orders will be until November 1 of 2025. First reading. An ordinance delaying enforcement of section 730.020.1 and section 730.100, of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Kennet, Missouri, relative to waste management and repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith.
Do we have a motion to approve this? The ordinance that's read?
Motion.
Motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second? Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
Second reading.
An ordinance delaying enforcement of section 730.020.1 and section 730.100, of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Kennet, Missouri, relative to the waste management, relative to waste management and repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith.
Second reading. Do we have a motion to approve this ordinance that's read? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Discussion. Palmer? Roll call vote.
Yes.
No.
No.
Yes.
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 Motion passes. Seven-two. You want more, Paul?
Got two more.
First reading is an ordinance amending chapter 730, section 730.010, of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Kennet, Missouri, relative to renumbering said chapter and section and repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith. That's just the renumbering of the ordinance.
Do we have a motion to approve this read?
Motion.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Do we have a second, Mr. Brown? Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Second reading. An ordinance amending chapter 730, section 730.010, of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Kennet, Missouri, relative to renumbering said chapter and section and repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith.
Second reading. Do we have a motion to approve? Do we have a second?
Second.
Yep. Second. Discussion. Roll call vote. Ms. Brown?
Yes.
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 No.
No.
Yes.
Aye.
Motion passes. Seven-two.
And the last one. Is an ordinance amending chapter 700, section 700.080, of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Kennet, Missouri, relative to collection for utility services of the Board of Public Works and repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith. This is basically adding the trash pickup charges to utilities charges.
Do we have a motion to approve the ordinance?
Motion.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
Second reading.
An ordinance amending chapter 700, section 700.080, of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Kennet, Missouri, relative to collection for utility services of the Board of Public Works and repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith.
Second reading. Do we have a motion to approve it?
Motion.
Do we have a motion, Ms. Palmer? Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second? Right? Discussion. I think we'll end up, Palmer?
Aye.
Yes.
No.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Motion passes. Seven-two. In your packet, you have CLGW expenditures. We'd love to have a motion to approve and a second.
Motion.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We need to set a date for a public hearing for rezoning 507 Ballard. We don't have to do those.
Okay.
Okay.
Just expenditures.
Okay.
We need to set a public hearing. Anyone opposed to the next council meeting, say six fifteen? Does that work for everybody?
Say one fifteen.
Okay. Set a public hearing for five oh seven Ballard, going from R two to B two. So six fifteen, we'll put it out. When did you show your picture? Next council meeting. We have first amendment. First duty.
November seventh.
Yes, November seventh. All right. We need to prove the statement of revenue expenditures, that's also in your packet.
Make a motion.
Do we have a motion for that? Just a nuisance. Do we have a second?
Okay.
Do we have a second? Well, any discussion changes, corrections that need to be done on that? That? Any more discussion? All in favor of approved, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Bank balances are in your packet, I think. Do you have any questions on the bank balances? It's not up for a while. All right, we have some bids that we need to open tonight. We have a total of four bids. Apex Paving, Robertson Asphalt and Bridge, Knuckle Brothers Concrete Street Replacement, and RL Pearson's, four bids. Ted Farmer, you want to open?
That's fine. These will be on tonight. These will go to committee, and the committee will evaluate these and bring it back to the council on what we're gonna do. Committee will be the sort of... Okay, Apex. For the asphalt work, they give a bid of six hundred and fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars, zero cents. They give a description, street by street, of the item that they want, that they're placing a bid on. Exactly the way we asked it to be done, and all right.
Yes. Who's this, Apex or who?
No. Yeah, Apex. Yeah. Like this one, it's from Robertson, great asphalt. Do they give a breakdown also by street?
I said, so get the insurance?
Yeah. Four hundred and eighty-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty-five dollars and twenty-two cents.
Bill, I'm sorry, could you repeat what that figure was?
Yes. Four hundred and eighty-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty-five and twenty-two cents. This is Knuckle Brothers. And we actually have done business with several of these companies so far, LVP.
Yes. We've done business with all of them so far.
All of them. And they've all been very good companies, if I recall.
Yes.
This is from Knuckle Brothers. And this is for removal of, this is concrete replacement, this is not asphalt. And is the total bid, well, let's see, first project, seventy, we've asked them to do this project by project.
Three different phases.
Three different ones, because that way if we ran out of money or needed to do something else, at that time we could do that. For their first project, seventy-four thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight. Second project, twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and sixty. The third project, seventy-one thousand, eight hundred. Okay, and this is RL Pearson's Construction, and they gave the bid on the three projects as well. Ninety-three thousand for the first project, forty thousand for the second project, and... Okay, so I'm gonna change the order of this a little bit, but, okay, so their Harrison Street to Jones is ninety-three thousand, the second project is repaired to...
Just give us the totals.
Yeah, okay, forty thousand, and project number three is eighty thousand, but wasn't in the same order.
Yeah, rolled together.
Yeah, but we'll be reviewing these as a, as a street committee, coming back with the recommendation.
What's the company name?
On that last one.
RL Pearson's. All right, okay. So you got two for paving and two for concrete?
Two for concrete, yes.
Okay. We'll turn that over to committee. Sure I didn't miss anything. I think we got everything covered on agenda. Now it's time for public comment. Anyone's not like to speak to council? Please, Tom, I appreciate it.
You said the last council made the hospital, it was gonna be demoed? Oh, okay, don't speak. Off to the real estate broker, it is gonna be demoed and put up for real. So, there was a difference, he was positive about it. That was reading the sale, fell through the last time. Building itself wasn't what the expectation was for us. And also, I wanna thank Mr. Bryant and Mr. Pelz for helping out Saturday after the shop was closed. Stayed all day long, helped out. I was there quarter day all the way to almost night, so.
Long day. Anyone else wants your pick to count though? Let's replace them up, say your name and address.
Dylan Cutt, fifteen fifteen Russell. I know I've heard few of you say that we the people voted y'all in, then why are you guys so scared about putting this deal on the ballot with the trash? I have seen Kennet go smaller and smaller since I moved here in nineteen ninety-four, along with the police department. Why don't we focus more on our police department than we are on this trash?
Anyone have any questions for us?
Laura Tate, fifteen oh six, Eleanor. You talked about that in order to get businesses in a hospital, we have to clean up Kennet. Many of you have been on these chairs for years, many, many years. Some of you have had one, two terms. Why are we just cleaning it up now? If we'd cleaned it up when you was here the first time, maybe we wouldn't be in this predicament in the first place. I mean, there's, the homes, you drive past all these empty businesses, we're looking at putting in two hundred thousand dollars worth of lights, we need to be focusing somewhere else with that money. I mean, I don't even know where it comes from, doesn't matter, it's two hundred thousand dollars. Why didn't we clean it up thirteen years ago? Why all of a sudden we gotta clean it up now? It has been a problem, we've been losing businesses for years. And it didn't have nothing to do with the cleanliness of it. I mean, are you gonna start at the city limit and go all the way through cleaning it up? I mean, you've made your point, and obviously it doesn't matter what we think, because you're gonna do it anyways, and there's no telling what else you've done, but y'all just gotta know that this is not right. I'm ashamed of most of you, I really am. Because I don't care how many calls you got, the signatures prove otherwise. And, I mean, I know that isn't gonna matter to you now at this point, but it's just, it's not right. If you wanted to clean up Kennet, you should've started before it got like this.
And Laura, we gotta say something else. This deal won't clean up Kennet.
No, it won't. It won't.
You cannot make people be clean when they are not clean.
Who's gonna make them carry it to the road?
It's never gonna happen.
No, it's not gonna happen. They're gonna continue, just like they do on Elm Street, throwing it in the backyard, cramming it in the trucks in the front yard, in the great big earth mover that's in there. That's where they're gonna put their trash. You can't make people carry this to the road. Now, you are planning on doing something about it if they don't carry it back to the house, but how you gonna make them carry it to the road? You could charge me whatever you wanted, if I don't carry it to the road, wouldn't carry it to the road. You can't make me.
This is not the final answer, this is the beginning. And we have to start somewhere, and I view this as the beginning, and that's all. I don't, I don't argue with anything on what you're saying, except we have to start somewhere.
Well, we should've started eight years ago, Bill.
Well, it got, it has been worked on a while. Best example I can give you, Towny, are you still here?
Yes, yes, sir.
Towny, when you were, you put that up for vote when you were councilman, ain't that right?
Yeah, about twenty-something years ago, it was a long time ago.
Yeah, and put it up for vote, should the, should we vote on, voting to do a citywide trash collection.
Oh, that's right.
At that time, we voted, the vote was no. All right, now, you can see the, the way he's worked on this to get this passed now, because we need to get it done now, and it's...
Rapidly.
Yeah.
Yeah, because you all really pushed it.
It's late in the game.
You've just, you've just thrown it at us.
I appreciate you speaking about it, too.
Well, let's be sure and get Kennet cleaned up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to add something to that. Can we restate the name?
No.
You know, we used to have a citywide cleanup once a year where everybody could take their stuff, whether it was out there at Compost, they used, had a place where you could pick up tires. How long has it been since we had one of them?
Been a while now.
Yeah, but it cost you taking it out there, right? I know it cost me, because I just took some stuff right there. But what I'm talking about is when we had, if you lived within a city limits of Kennet, you could take your big items out there, and it didn't cost you nothing.
That's correct. Put it by the road a lot of times.
Yeah, we put it by the road.
It cost the city eighty-five thousand.
Okay. But that's back when the city, when we had city stickers, right?
No, I think they did it just recently, like, about four years ago.
Two thousand twenty, I think.
The way you got rid of city stickers about ten years, twelve years ago.
Okay, but now we're operating off the sales tax, right? Which is triple the amount of what city stickers was?
A lot more. Because fair city stickers, a whole lot more.
Right, right.
Like fifty thousand, I think.
Why, why is it we even skipping here? Why can't we still have that once a year? With the amount of money that we have coming in from that?
This program, and this program is going to include basically a weekly pickup of that type of stuff. Yard waste, linen, correct?
Yard waste and anything put by the road with, I don't know, with the exception of whatever, can't be taken by law, Bill, I would say. I really, I have to divert this over to CLGW to answer that question properly, but from what we understand, you got matches, put it by the road, it will get, it will disappear in a week's time. You know, something during that week.
I'm just saying, if they would've continued doing that once a year like we always did during the spring, you know, they're talking about how dirty Kennet is, it probably would've helped, if we did it just once a year, take it out to the road.
Hopefully, we'll get it done every week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Jamie Chester, two oh one, Lincoln Circle, I'm not speaking on behalf of Citywide Yes and Water. I'm gonna quote, I'm gonna make two quotes, I've been accused of doing lots of quotes, I'm gonna quote two things. A very wise woman once called me, not called me, that said that there are citizens out there, and they're called caves, and they're citizens against virtually everything, there's nothing you can do right for them. And the other thing I wanted to quote is that old Chinese proverb, "The best time to plant a tree was twenty years ago and today." So, there you go.
Hey, if you thought I'd quote, I got a quote for you.
Tell me.
President Reagan said the most scariest words in the English dictionary was, "When the government comes to your door and asks if they can help." I don't need your help for me to take my trash out, I have a cover. And the other people still will not take their trash out, no matter what you put in the place.
Time will tell.
Anyone else want to do the council tonight? Are you interested?
Oh, sorry, I have a comment, sorry, my comment wasn't about the trash, it was about the event, so.
Okay.
But, but since I'm known for talking trash, I'll go ahead and make a comment about that. I really, I hear everyone's point of view, and I'm very hopeful that the new turn that we're taking with the trash pickup is gonna make things better. I agree that, yes, the, I've heard the tree comment before, it was, you know, to plant one twenty years ago would've been, would've been the best time, but today is the next best time. And I just would like to see it bring us actually closer together than dividing us, and I know, there I am with my rose-colored glasses again. But, hopefully, there's opportunity to clean up Kennet, and it's not gonna be perfect, but we can't let perfect get in the way of good, and we just have to continue to try to clean up our city. So I'm hopeful that it is going to make us better together as opposed to dividing us. And I would like to see us, it may not be a citywide cleanup annually, I'm glad that on a weekly basis, the larger degree will be removed, but I still would like to see us do some other initiatives, maybe once a month or once a quarter, that kind of boosts our ability to do some cleanup projects together, whether they're focused in award, and each ward does something throughout the year, but maybe there's just opportunity for us to do more things together. Did any of you have any comments after what I said about that? My next comment is about the Sheryl Crow watch party that we are hosting, I shall say that Jill Mowley with the Palace Theater is, has offered the Palace Theater for the evening for any citizens in Kennet or around the region or from anywhere to come and join watching the Sheryl Crow induction into the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame live. It's gonna be streamed live, and Jill's theater has incredible sound, and we do understand that Cheryl will be performing that night as well, so it'll be a great opportunity to watch her perform live. The tickets are free, and the event is November third, twenty twenty-three, it's a Friday night, and we want it to be family-friendly, so, you know, you're welcome to, the tickets are limited to four per household or per person, but you are welcome to bring your school-age kids with you. The other comment I have is that we only have asked the, the city of two things so far. One is, we're gonna have an outdoor tent for refreshments, for food and refreshments, and since that ground is actually pavement, we are going to need to secure the tent with barrels of water. So, my understanding is that our ask is that it's gonna take a few fifty-five gallon drums of water to secure the tent, and I believe the fire department may be willing to help us.
At the pool, we use five-gallon buckets and had a strap to them, so we didn't have to have the fifty-five gallon buckets, and we did it every other pole, and that really is pretty much enough to do this, do it, but if you, if you wanna do fifty-five gallon buckets...
You know what, the, the tent company will give us more details, that was just the, maybe he gave us the worst-case scenario, depending on wind and some other things, so we will definitely be, make a conscious effort to use the, the least amount of water as possible so that we won't be wasting water. The other thing we ask for is, is the street department was gonna ask us...
Before you go to that, last, can you...
Thank you.
Okay. Well, make sure you got answers now.
We appreciate that.
Thank you.
The street department was also gonna help us with, I guess I could say barricades to petition off so that the vehicle traffic won't go into where the foot traffic is gonna be, and so they agreed to help us with that.
That's taken care of, Keith.
Yes, we, I found something, I'm sorry I haven't sent a picture of it yet.
No problem, I appreciate that.
We've got something, yes.
Okay, and then the last thing is that there are, there are three hundred tickets available in the theater, and so far, a hundred and fifty of the tickets have been claimed just since the last time that we made the announcement at the city council meeting, and so just be sure to RSVP by going on to, you can find a link to the tickets from the Facebook page, or you can find it directly onto the Eventbrite site, and again, be sure to RSVP so, so we can get a proper account for food. And then the last thing I was gonna say is that I believe that tomorrow, a plaque will be awarded to the Crow family, do you wanna speak on that, Mayor Ackerman? The plaque will be awarded to the Crow family, to the Sheryl Crow family, because November third, twenty twenty-three, will be officially declared Sheryl Crow Day in Kennet. And, so I think it's great, just for us to celebrate one another, and I'll say it again that a solar eclipse is actually rarer than one of our Kennet... and so far, a hundred and fifty of the tickets have been claimed just since the last time that we made the announcement at the city council meeting. And so just be sure to RSVP by going on to, you can find the link to the tickets from the Facebook page, or you can find it directly onto the Eventbrite site. And again, be sure to RSVP so we can get a proper account for food. And then the last thing I was gonna say is that I believe that tomorrow, a plaque will be awarded to the Crow family. Do you wanna speak on that, Mayor? That a plaque will be awarded to the Crow family, to the Sheryl Crow family, because November third, twenty twenty-three, will be officially declared Sheryl Crow Day in Kennet. And so I think it's great, just for us to celebrate one another, and I'll say it again that a solar eclipse is actually rarer than one of our Kennet-owned being inducted into the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame. And I love music. I love every genre of music. Maybe, there may be a few things that I don't like, but overall, I think it's a reason to celebrate and for us to, again, celebrate together. Are there any questions or comments for me?
Make sure you let us know if you need any more help, Bill.
Okay. Carolyn, you may wanna mention there will be some outdoor seating, too, I believe, and you can watch it under the tent. Yes, there will be some outdoor seating, so, you know, because we thought if we didn't get all of the, if we got above the three hundred RSVPs, or if there were a few walk-ups, that we really didn't wanna deny anybody. So there will be some seating under the tent area. And there will be, again, food and beverage, and there will also be door prizes. And so when you come, your ticket will have a ticket number, and we will be giving door prizes to those that are in attendance.
Okay, are y'all gonna be coordinating with the show itself to kind of get a feel of what time it's all gonna happen?
We are. Jill has been, she's been watching, and of course, she's had direct contact with the representatives of the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame. So we've been trying to get how the night is gonna flow so that we'll have a better idea of where Cheryl is gonna fall in the list of inductees and, you know, when she's actually going to perform.
Right now, we think it is early in the program, but it could always change, so we don't wanna be too specific.
Right. The doors will open at the Palace at six o'clock, and we understand that the event actually starts at seven o'clock, which is at seven o'clock Eastern time, right?
No.
No, it starts at eight o'clock Eastern time. So, of course, seven o'clock, it'll start at seven o'clock our time, but our doors will open at six o'clock. And all of that, again, is available on Facebook and on the other right side.
I just like y'all.
I was just gonna say, the Facebook page is Sheryl Crow Watch Party. Yeah, so if you go Facebook and look for that, you should find it.
Thank you very much. Good started. It's amazing, isn't it?
Okay, thank you.
We've got, Mr. Cook is going to bring some ordinances for possible changes concerning the owner-tenant relationship with the trash, with the trash pickup. I'm gonna have him give them to Victor here, and Victor can just... Mr. Lee, and then at that time, you'll see about bringing it to the council.
Anything else? People with...
Yeah. I'm Greaton Jenkins. I live at six oh two west, not, a couple of y'all live in Illinois. A lot of y'all probably knew my half-fort, Richard Jenkins. He owns rental property here in Tewksbury. It's one of them many trash companies that I grew up working with my entire life. I don't think it's fair for y'all to push this on us. I think it needs to go on a ballot, where we have a decision of who we want to have our trash picked up. Not just who y'all want. It should be decided between the residents and the people who live in whatever ward that you're in. It doesn't matter what ward you're in. It shouldn't just be one person, because you're canceling mom and pop places. It was voted earlier, either this year or last year, that we have Sharp pick our trash up, and then now you're letting Citywide have some water to do. That doesn't make any sense to me. You vote for one person to be able to pick it up, and then now you wanna take that away from them and put it on Citywide gas and water. That's not fair. It needs to go to a vote for the city to decide, the people who live here, not just council members. And I'm not saying that to be me. I've lived here my whole life. My grandfather had two businesses, fifty rental properties. My uncles now own them and take care of them. It does cost to take things out to the compost. And back before, when they were doing citywide cleanup, they had some, if I'm not mistaken, at the fire station one year, right there. They had that fire stations where you can go and drop your stuff off, throw it off in there. You can't take paint cans or tires or anything like that to the compost. I know that for a fact, because they ask you when you go out there with a trailer if you have tires or paint cans or anything like that. So what do we do with those items that I know for a fact the compost won't take in their roll-off containers? I grew up around this. I'm not blind.
I think paint can't be lit up by the drive-in, you're at the building.
I think you can take paint and like paint it on cardboard or something. When it dries, you can take it out there. And I think when the can dries up, Randy, they'll take it also, but you can't be liquid in there.
Yeah, no, but you'll have to pop the top on paint cans and have... But no tires, no tires on the land.
So what do you do with the tires?
Mr. Ellison's been working on that project as well. Ain't that right? Is he still involved in that? Where is Ms. Ellison?
Oh, you know, there has been discussion about it, but I don't believe, I'll say that. There has been discussion about it, but I don't believe that any type of plan has been solidified. We have looked into the state, possibly helping with some subsidized funding to assist with it, but other than that, we haven't made any more progress. Ray, do you know more about tires?
The fee, tire dealers will take them, have the cost of money for them to take them. Usually, when you buy new tires, it's figured in on cost, unless you ask them to be. Right now, that's the only thing. The state has a grant out, but it's not available to citizens right now.
I just like, I grew up here. Been here my whole life. And he had two businesses. He had rental properties. I know all about it. It shouldn't be up to just one. It shouldn't. It should be up to people who live here every single day, work every single day. I work nineteen hours a day. I'm not gonna remember to take my trash hanging from the roof. That's not difficult, possibly, to me.
Then we'll thank you, Pink Waters. All righty. Anything else? People with...